Gathered, uh, due to COVID-19 mandates, the Village of Vernon Hills Board Meeting has moved to a web-based video conference using Zoom. We anticipate any future meetings held whilst stay-at-home orders are in effect will continue to use this method. Should I go to roll call?
Yes.
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 Roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Takaka.
Here.
Okay, we have a core present. We need to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States.
States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
Which stands. One nation under God. Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We, we are conducting this meeting tonight by Zoom in light of the ongoing pandemic and the continuing declaration of disaster by the governor. I've determined that in-person Village Board meetings are not practical or prudent at this time due to the ongoing public health emergency. Okay. Right, first, what's the first item here? Citizens, any citizens wishing to address the board?
There are no citizens wishing to address the board tonight.
Okay, alright. Well, the first item I have is a proclamation in recognition of the Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon, January sixteenth through thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Yoga is an ancient Hindu practice developed thousands of years ago on the Indian subcontinent continent and intended for maintaining spiritual, mental, and physical well-being. Sura, nama, namaskara, or sun salutation is a traditional yogic practice combining a sequence of positions with breathing exercises. Hindu Sha Yam Sayak Sang, or HHS, is a nonprofit charitable organization with a branch located Buffalo Grove and serving the Vernon Hills community. This organization conducts Hindu values, education, and community service activities. HHS has organized its annual Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon with the goal of having one thousand individual participates, cumulative, complete eleven thousand repetitions of Sura, namaskara, to promote the spiritual, mental, and physical well-being of all the members of the community. Yoga enthusiasts, yoga studios, local schools, and other community organizations are participating in the HSS Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon. Now therefore be resolved, the village's Reverend Vernon Hills has hereby recognized HSS for organizing its annual Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon to promote the spiritual, mental, and physical well-being of all members of the community. Okay. Village manager.
Just a reminder that later this evening, the village president will sign Declaration twenty-one dash zero-two, which is the emergency declaration that follows the governor's state of emergency declaration, which will remain in effect until the next village board meeting, which will be February second.
Okay. Chief Kreese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During our last board meeting, I mentioned that we might see a criminal justice bill introduced during the lame duck session. Shortly after we adjourned that meeting, I received notice that a bill had just dropped over six hundred pages in length. It took me and other chiefs a few days just to read and understand what was included, as much of the language in this bill had never been seen before. In fact, although we had conceptual conversations earlier in the year, repeated requests to see draft language from the bill was denied. As you're likely aware, this timing left only a few days during the lame duck session to try and negotiate some changes. I and many others went to work pointing out some severely troubling aspects of this bill. For instance, a provision that was described as ending qualified immunity, a federal legal concept often misunderstood and mischaracterized, would have eroded longstanding state tort immunity only for police officers, even though the protection currently applies to all public officials and employees, and prevents lawsuits for mere negligence and mistakes. Other aspects of the bill seeking to change important parts of existing laws were so poorly crafted, they will or would, would have resulted in serious unintended consequences, even though there's principled agreement on the need for some changes. Fortunately, our collective efforts were persuasive in helping remove some of the most troubling aspects of this bill. However, as you know, the bill now over seven hundred pages in length did pass the Senate at four AM in the morning and the House just hours before the lame duck session ended, and less than seven days after it was first introduced. It currently awaits the governor's consideration, but because of the manner it was passed, I understand that a mandatory veto is not available. The final language in the bill is still currently being evaluated, as the lack of law enforcement expertise in crafting leaves many sections confusing, conflicting, and unworkable. I highlight the lack of collaboration and contrast it with what is much, which is what is much more typical, that being an exchange of ideas and draft language proposals between key stakeholders. Such was the experience this year for House Bill eight forty-one, the result of key collaborations between Attorney General Kwame Ruhul and law enforcement organizations. That bill was a result of months of back and forth and resulted in effective language for the police decertification process, an issue important to all of us. House Bill eight forty-one was eventually inserted into this omnibus criminal justice reform bill called House Bill thirty-six fifty-three that was eventually passed. If you indulge me just for a moment, I'll just continue for just two more minutes. I'll provide you with just one example of the resulting problem. As a chief of police for a police department that recently deployed body-worn cameras, this bill negatively impacts that body-worn camera deployment. If the proposed law goes into effect July one, two thousand twenty, I will likely be compelled to recall the body-worn cameras until appropriate changes can be made. This is just one example how the intention of the bill completely misses as it's advertised to ensure all officers in the state wear body cameras. And I'll provide the example here, and again, this is just one place that we've identified in the, in the law that is extremely troubling. The new law, the new language mandates that a law enforcement officer or someone acting on their behalf, if they knowingly and intentionally fail to comply with the state law or their department policy requiring the use of body-worn cameras, is committing a class-three felony. I'll share with you that the current law on body-worn cameras is over twenty-seven hundred words. Our current department policy is over thirty-five hundred words. And so this provision criminalizes an officer failing to comply with a very complex set of regulations. Such standard of attention is unreasonable and draconian. And I cannot in good conscience put officers in such potential legal jeopardy. And let me be clear, for thirty years as a police officer, much to the chagrin of my early supervisors and perhaps to some of my current subordinates, I've been committed to continual improvement in the evolution of this profession. This is not, my concerns are not about defending the status quo. This is about an effective change and the need to include meaningful input from those of us who are charged with implementing the desired improvements. That did not happen here. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions from staff or the board on this?
I'd see from the transmittal that there's no obligation for municipalities under fifty thousand to implement this until January of two thousand twenty-five. Does that mean that if you were to implement body cameras beforehand, you have to abide by those policies, or do you not have to abide by the policy until two thousand twenty-five?
If, if you're implementing cameras, you have to abide by the policy. There's nothing requiring implementing cameras for our size agency until two thousand twenty-five. And the final language of the bill took away the penalty for agencies that continue to choose not to deploy cameras. So, a law that was put in place in two thousand fifteen, again, somewhat criticized in law enforcement as, as being somewhat unworkable, is largely attributed to why we have such a low percentage of police departments deploying body cameras. I would say less than twenty-five percent of Illinois agencies have deployed body cameras. We've asked repeatedly for trailer bills or improvements for that language. We finally found a solution, Vernon Hills, to deploy them, but it, the, the current provisions really prevent a lot, particularly smaller agencies, from meeting the requirements. This bill goes in the opposite direction of that, what we were hoping to happen this time.
And let me add just a punctuation point to Chief Kreese's comments that he made a little bit earlier. You know, even though the statute says where an officer knowingly turns off his camera, how do you know if the officer knowingly turned it off, inadvertently turned it off, or accidentally left it off? That leaves a lot of room for doubt. And you're talking about charging a, a police officer with a class-three felony, which would cause him or her to lose their certification, lose their job as a police officer, and lose their pension that they may have worked fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years or longer, all because a camera wasn't turned on.
And let me, let me add to Mark's point here. And I could reread it if you like, but it's, it's not suggesting that the officer has an intention to tamper with evidence or to destroy evidence or conceal anything. It's, it's the mere fact of violating the policy. I'm not aware of another law in Illinois that makes a policy violation a felony or a crime of any kind. So, again, it, now there is, there is workable language that we had worked back and forth with the Attorney General in eight forty-one that addresses this. In fact, it, it explains it in the decertification process. So, I don't want to get too far down in the weeds, but essentially, it's a higher standard to decertify an officer than it is to charge them with a felony because of the conflict. And, and again, I want to emphasize, this is one area of many that we are currently evaluating. I think it's going to probably take us another week or two as chiefs to really collect our thoughts on just how troubling some of this language is. And not, and not that we're principally opposed to reform and improvements in many areas that this bill sought to address, but it just, it went about it so haphazardly, and so it's such a ramrod approach, we're left with very troubling results.
Agreed. So what would, is there anything that we as a board could do that you would like us to do? A letter to the, to the governor, or anything like that?
I, I am aware of at least one other community that board is passing a resolution at their next meeting. I don't know if, if it will become somewhat of a moot point on the governor's decision. This is in front of him. I don't know how long he has to consider it, but certainly a resolution or a letter to the governor. And, and if, if that becomes too late, I think the same either a letter or resolution to our local elected officials who have been engaged in this process, have been open in their communications with us and our surrounding chiefs, and I think are, are very possibly going to be an effective, effective ally if this bill is signed in implementing a trailer bill to address some of these most, most problematic areas before it goes into effect July one. So, our hope is it doesn't get signed. Our hope is it doesn't get signed. If it does get signed, our hope is that a trailer bill will address these most problematic areas before July one.
What I thought as we left our last meeting was we were going to, staff was going to put together a series of concerns that required legislation on a multitude of issues. Primarily, in my mind, it was placebo and things associated with that, but also we kind of discussed now that the timeframe changed, but issues that both Mark and Pat, the chief, found disconcerting in what they were hearing and so far as rumors. So, back to the, the point at hand is, are we working on that letter or series of things that we wanted to pass on to our state rep? Because he invited us to provide input on potential legislation, and should that be included, and should we, you know, copy the world on it, including the press?
Well, when, when does this, the spring session start?
Soon.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
In the next week or two?
I could check.
Alright. Well then, we gotta get the, the letter that trustee Schultz is discussing, put together, you know, and get it out to our, you know, state senator and the house rep, so.
Yeah, because as I recall, I was advised by the state rep that he was going to introduce the flag legislation the third week in January.
Yeah, I thought in the transmittal it said everything had to be in by February eleventh or something?
Yeah. Yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah, we'll get it done by then. Quite, quite honestly, that fell by the wayside when this bill was dropped like two days after our last board meeting. And I know Pat and I have made a zillion phone calls, more so than Pat than I, but zillions of phone calls and speaking to everybody that we could that would listen to this, and emails and, and the like, just trying to get this thing stalled until there's a chance to come together and work on a meaningful resolution.
And what about, yeah, what about our, our hired representatives?
They've been working on it. As a matter of fact, I was getting hourly phone calls or text messages from them for about two days straight. Sometimes I appreciated that, but, and I mean around the clock, every, every hour, because they were meeting through the middle of the night, as you probably saw in the newspapers and the media. This bill was, wasn't approved and signed until four fifty-five AM. They've done everything they can. They said this was, you know, there were some sort of agreements made between the Black Caucus and the Democratic leadership to get this thing pushed through. As is.
And, and I'll add that it, this, this has been, it's been very hard for me to do anything other than this last fourteen days. And, and every day it's been long hours, lots of conversations, and not just with fellow chiefs, but with a lot of our elected officials, a ton of elected officials. And really, it's, it, it did make a difference. The, the original bill is introduced, if that would have passed, so, and and unfortunately, my concern is that if we don't continue to educate people about this, that there will be further pushes to make those kind of changes. And again, I, I can only tell you that police officers feel really under siege by the General Assembly after being briefed about this bill. I mean, that, that's simply all I can say. And I, I put on his uniform. I don't talk about politics. I'm just telling you about how this is impacting the men and women of the police departments and the people that are out there. And, and again, I think that they understand there are some real meaningful changes needed, but the, the way this was, this was going to completely just erase, the original bill is introduced was going to completely erase collective bargaining provisions with no substitute. You know, we, we know there's a need to improve disciplinary recourse in law enforcement. I, I have complained about that many times. The current system has some real faults, but you can't just eliminate it and then leave it on over a thousand police departments in Illinois to figure out what the proper due process is. So, the, the original bill is introduced was far more troubling than the bill that was passed, but we still have some real serious concerns.
Yeah, well, the sooner we document everything, the better off I think we'll all be in understanding the areas that truly need some revision and all the other issues that are important to the village at large.
Yeah, and it's just going to take us some time, sir. That's, that's, we really, there's some language here that we don't know what it means. There's one particular section when it comes to less lethal munitions. I've probably talked to ten chiefs and five of them think it means one thing, five of them means another, because it doesn't have legal definitions assigned, and it's so inconsistent with other parts of Illinois law. So we are really struggling just to, we're still in that kind of evaluative stage, so we can articulate what is most important about fixing.
Sure. No, I, I understand that completely, because part of the problem with the way our legislature works is that a bill is nothing. It's, it's just a combination of words, and it really doesn't get any meaning until months after it's passed and has gone through, was it JCAR, the Joint Committee on Actions and Rules, or whatever JCAR stands for, but they're the folks that really put pen to paper and define what each line means, which section means, and that's, that's kind of a sad thing when you've got legislation that requires that level of after action, so.
So is that when the trailer bills come out?
No, I, well, the trailer bills come out after JCAR, but first, it's like the, the indoor Clean Air Act. You know, the, the bill was passed, but it was basically a shell, and it wasn't until JCAR got done defining the fifteen-foot, and then, then there was the trailer bill to extend it to twenty-five feet and, and all the other ancillary thing.
Right, well, at least there's some light at the end of the tunnel that this thing could be modified somewhat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. President, the current legislative session began January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and it goes through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, so they're in session again.
Yes.
Yeah. Thirteenth was the day that they put in the new speaker.
Okay. Any other comments on this one? Alright. On the vote agenda, is there a motion to approve A through D?
So made.
There's second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next is financial assistance to business discussion. This is unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the January fifth Village Board Meeting, staff was directed to, to conduct research or further research on three action items that were presented and discussed during that last meeting. Number one was to research criteria that could be used to identify those businesses that may be considered for assistance by waiving their business or liquor license fees for two thousand twenty-one, and what the financial impact to the village would be if that was accomplished. The second one was if the village chose to enter into a food and beverage sales-sharing agreement with these same businesses. Again, what would the financial impact be to the village? And the third was to research a coupon incentive program or some similar type of program that was enacted in Libertyville that, that helped drive people, customers to the businesses that are having such a difficult time. In regards to the first item, staff spent a considerable amount of time developing, reviewing criteria that can be used to identify those businesses. A list of that criteria was included in a memo that I submitted along with your packet, so I won't go through all those individually. But if all those items were considered, there's currently eighty-four restaurants that are licensed in Vernon Hills. If those four criteria were applied to these licensees, we estimate that there would be roughly thirty-eight restaurants that would qualify to take advantage of the, the fee license waiver proposal. And the total cost of that would be about sixty-two thousand, a little over sixty-two thousand dollars in lost revenue to the village. For item number two, if item number one was actually implemented, you can see that there is probably general recognition that that would have minimal impact on the businesses, especially those that truly need the assistance, because you're talking about waiving a fee of maybe seven hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, or in some cases, as much as two thousand. During the previous discussion, the board considered and discussed a proposal of possibly entering, entering into a sales tax sharing agreement with the same restaurants, but only as that applies to the food and beverage license. Excuse me, the food and beverage tax. Staff was requested to estimate the financial impact to the village if we were to split the one percent food and beverage tax fifty-fifty with the businesses for a period of time. For purposes of this discussion, we reviewed the food and beverage tax revenue for the same thirty-eight restaurants for the past calendar year of two thousand twenty. The rationale being that the revenue generated for the most part was during the pandemic period. And since the restaurants are still under pandemic mitigation measures, it was fair to assume that the revenue would be rather consistent for the foreseeable future comparing next year or this current year to this past year. The average revenue generated to the village from the food and beverage tax from each of these, or from the total of these thirty-eight restaurants is a little over seventeen thousand dollars a month, a month combined. If the village were to share the tax revenue with the restaurants, the impact to the village would be approximately eight, eighty-six hundred dollars per month. The impact of extending the food and beverage tax sharing agreement for a longer period of time, we estimated to be if, if we did this for three months, the loss of revenue amongst all those thirty-eight businesses would be about twenty-six thousand dollars. Six months would be about fifty-two thousand dollars. Nine months would be about seventy-eight thousand dollars, and twelve months, a little over a hundred and three thousand dollars. And just for discussion purposes, we took our best effort, if those criteria were adopted, that it would apply to about thirty-eight restaurants. Our goal would be if this, if this process was implemented or approved by the board along with their liquor license applications and business license applications for renewal, it'd be a letter explaining the bill, the businesses, or I'm sorry, explaining the board's process that we're implementing, and explaining to them the criteria that was used to identify it, and allowing businesses who feel that we may have erred in judgment and may not have applied these criteria correctly to them, give them an opportunity to appeal that decision, in which case the number of restaurants could go up a bit. I, I don't know how much. Depends on the number of appeals that we receive. And then the last action item was, staff was requested to look at, at a coupon or some type of similar process or program like the one that was representative, who have been in Libertyville for purposes of driving customers to the restaurants. And for that, John Petrello did an extensive amount of research on that and some other projects that we have already embarked on. I'll turn it over to John for his discussion.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Mark asked that I prepare some comments tonight to talk about the action items from the last board meeting. Staff heard the suggestions and comments on steps that should be considered or taken to spur additional interest and ultimately support for Vernon Hills Restaurants. First, our communications team has been in the field, and if you hadn't had an opportunity to see the post, content has come in the form of short videos in which we have visited smaller family-owned restaurants. We have included direct messaging from restaurant staff and business owners, providing them an opportunity to feature their signature items, along with messaging about what's next at Hawthorne Mall and some of the other venues within the village. In the coming weeks, you can expect to see more content that is fun and continues to build on the synergy being created right here in Vernon Hills. In the coming weeks, excuse me, to go beyond In the coming weeks, excuse me, to go beyond our borders, the experience for in Hills Instagram page was set up to exclusively feature our hospitality venues and shopping. We believe people are enjoying this platform, and as you may have seen, recent posts are hoping, helping to grow both our Facebook following and our Instagram following. We're hopeful the people seeing the content are being exposed to Vernon Hills Restaurants that they may not be aware of, and we're hopeful views will be translating into visits and support for our restaurants. Kristen is present and can also answer any questions on reach and recent success. Second, we acted on the suggestion of board members to explore some type of gift card incentive program. Our research from other towns to look at this program has shown us that it's difficult to manage along with some other logistical challenges for staff. Know that we are experimenting with this concept and in collaboration with the GLV, gift cards equal to the cost of one dinner have been purchased from several Vernon Hills Restaurants such as McAllister's, Lazy Dog, Jamison's, Claim Company, and Scotty's. A wine basket has been created in which the gift cards can be placed and tied, placed inside, and it's been titled Date Night in Vernon Hills. The GLV Chamber has an upcoming virtual event on February eighteenth, and these restaurants will be featured in upcoming communications, and at the event, the gift cards can be bid on. Is our hope that the money raised will be used for additional promotion of area businesses. We will provide an update to the board on the success of this initiative in late February. We do believe the suggestions from the board are creating synergy and the continued collaboration with our partners, along with the creative content our team continues to place on our platforms, is putting more eyes on Vernon Hills Restaurants, more eyes on Melody Farms, and creating tremendous excitement for the redevelopment of Hawthorne Summer. We also want to remind everyone of all the great venues that are here in Vernon Hills and all the great things that are to come for Vernon Hills in twenty twenty-one. So the ideas we believe are working, and Kristen and I are here, we can answer any questions on reach or success or listen to any other comments or suggestions that you would like us to explore.
And also, just as a footnote to John's comments, the coupon program that Trustee Takaoka was referring to last month, when we finally were able to get ahold of someone from Libertyville to speak with them, that program was never implemented, partially because of the difficulty to manage a program of that size. They did work on a car rebate program where if you bought a brand-new car from a dealership in Libertyville, non-residents would get a gift card for a hundred dollars. Residents would get a gift card for two hundred dollars that could be used at any business throughout Libertyville. The program, I don't know how long it ran for, but it's over already, and they estimate that the cost is going to be somewhere around thirty thousand dollars. But it's a significant amount of staff time to redeem the coupons, mail checks, money back to all the businesses where these items are redeemed. And if you look at the thirty thousand dollars and spread it out over all the businesses that Libertyville has, I'm not sure that it has a, a very strong impact on the business community, or it's, it's that helpful. So with that, we'll turn it over to you for questions and guidance, suggestions, et cetera.
Well.
I have a.
Well, you know, my, my comment is, are we gonna do anything? You know, as far as, you know, the license fees, are we gonna, you know, waive those? Are we gonna do anything with the, the food and beverage tax, you know?
I, I think we personally, I think we should do both. I think we should waive the fees. And if it isn't too significant, at least for the first six months, I'd like to see us give the full one percent back on the liquor.
I suggest the same thing for the one percent.
I, I would like to make a suggestion. How's about this? Since this pandemic started, basically, call it April of last year, why don't we, could we rebate them nine months of the half percent? Run it another six months at the half percent and reevaluate if we need to continue? So, I mean, at least then we put, and we have an immediate effect. We go back, look at the prior, you know, April through December of twenty twenty, rebate them half of their, you know, food and beverage tax and then run the half a percent through the first six months of this year and then reconvene and reassess if things continue. That would be a total of fifteen months.
And the fact that there's thirty-eight restaurants that, that fall under, you know, potential reimbursements?
Well, it could be a few more. I mean, I like Mark's idea to give them a, I mean, we, the ones we know for sure, we just go ahead and go now, but others would have an opportunity to say, wait a minute, you know, this applies to.
Right, right.
Was that where Ann would come in and her people? You know, to like, look at balance sheets and stuff and such?
Well, we maintain the sales tax records. Finance Department maintains it, and, and I had the Finance Department pull all those together, so I have the sales tax records for all the restaurants, all the licensees in Vernon Hills. So that's easy enough to figure out. So we have it, we have them for the past year. We did it for twenty twenty, trying to use that as a comparative year, figuring that this year is going to be about the same as last year.
Well, you know, it'd be nice is to get something going sooner than later, you know?
You say the word. As soon as I have direction, we can move forward with this.
I like what Craig talked about, giving them a lump based on the, the last X number of months. At least that, you know, may give them another month or two of operation. If we give them a lump, that'll help pay for some amount of rent or whatever. So going back a few months, whatever the number is, three months, six months, nine months, but I, I like that. And then going forward with a fifty-fifty split through the, we'll say the next six months.
Yeah, because by giving them the rebate, that, that actually puts some cash in their hand.
Correct.
Now, keep in mind that there's a new round of stimulus that was approved by, by the current president and that the future president is going to be implementing his own round, his own round of incentives. So there's, there's gonna be some money available, especially the PPP program, and then there's a few other ones that are coming. So not trying to say we should or should not do anything, but just, just keep that in mind.
Question two out of the, you have eighty-four restaurants and only thirty-eight, so that's half. Basically, so basically, half of our restaurants are, are privately owned or, and the rest are?
Well, it's, remember, it's those licensed to sell food and beverage. So you've got places like Walmart, you've got places like Sam's Club, you've got Target. You've got a lot of places, you have a lot of convenience stores that sell food and liquor, but only, you know, incidental to their main business. And that's some of the, those are one of the criterias that we added. As a matter of fact, we, in our criteria, proposed criteria, we excluded like convenience stores, gas stations, places that are primarily designed as carryouts. There are a lot of restaurants in town which are strictly carryout, like pizza restaurants. Based on the sales, some of their sales have doubled and tripled during this time period because you couldn't go out, but you could order. I know of one restaurant that had to order or had to hire twelve new delivery people to handle the surge in business they had. So not all the restaurants have been negatively affected. If you notice, one of the criteria was is they have to be able to demonstrate a loss of at least fifteen percent, which is not huge, but in the restaurant world, it certainly could be big. A fifteen percent decrease in sales, and we can, we can measure that by the loss in sales tax revenue from two thousand and twenty as compared to two thousand and nineteen.
One, one point of information or point of order is that it's my understanding that that sales tax revenue information is proprietary information and only really the village manager and the treasurer are allowed to have that. If we start handing out money, so to speak, how that kind of provides a trail backwards to what their revenues were, is that problematic? And I guess I looked at Jim Ferrero.
Sure, understood. You, you are correct. Sales tax information is confidential and cannot be revealed. However, I, I don't think if we find that a, a restaurant qualifies because they have had a decrease of at least fifteen percent, we are not going to be revealing their, their actual totals. I, I don't think you can work your way back to the actual totals. What you can work your way to is there, there's been a decrease in the actual total. So I don't think that's going to be a violation of the confidentiality provision.
Give them one half of what we collected. So basically, one could say that you multiply that by.
Jim, here's, here's an easier way to do that. Is I would not be recommending, as I mentioned in the memo, I would not be recommending a refund. If you do that, you're gonna overwhelm staff because we don't have, we don't have staff to be able to do that. Every business has to file an ST one form, which is their state, their state tax form, sales tax form with that they have to file with the state. And then we require a copy of that be sent to the village with a check for their one percent of sales. So in this case, what I would recommend is if we're gonna do a fifty-fifty split, they send the same ST one form to the village with a check for a half a percent. That way, there's, there's no, we're not processing payments, we're not sending any money back. There's no paper trail on that, yet we still know how much they're collecting because we have the state form.
Yeah, but that goes against Craig's suggestion, though, of, of rebating the last six to nine months.
I'll leave that to you, but realize that that's gonna be, that's gonna be a real pain to do that.
Well, even though Ann's not an employee of the village, I still don't want to see her go to jail for releasing proprietary information.
Although she may not mind at this point. This is budget time. She may not mind.
So, so how can, how can we get more cash into their hands then?
Yeah.
Without revealing it and without, without causing too much heartache of the village staff?
Uh, that's a good question because we never looked at the possibility. That was never discussed going backwards in time. It was always moving forward. Because the applications for business licenses, liquor licenses, et cetera, is, is now. This is usually, we would have sent those out like two weeks ago at the first of the year.
All right, well, then, let's.
Let's do that.
Let's just go forward with a suggestion, recommendation of the board here to identify the, the qualifying recipients and indicate that there will be zero liquor and license fee for the coming year.
And if you want to put more money in their pocket faster, you know, the recommendation here was to split the sales tax revenue fifty-fifty, rather than go back and try and do this retroactively. And let's, let's say six months, and then we can always reevaluate it based on the current financial conditions at that time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing. Give them the whole one percent of that.
Yeah.
I agree too.
Agree.
Well, if that's cleaner, that's good.
Agree.
That's very clean, and then we can have, Jim, I think we'll need to, we'll, we'll need to draft an ordinance abating that and refunding that. We'll have to do all that.
And what about?
Correct.
Do we want to put a stipulation that if they get X amount of dollars from the federal government?
We'll never know. We'll never know how much they get.
And we'll just.
You're gonna have to rely on faith that, that they've gotten burned bad enough over the past ten months.
Yeah, you have to prove twenty percent loss of rev for the next round.
I, I calculated fifteen percent. That's what I went at.
No, I know you did, but the government for this next round of PPP is twenty percent.
It's more strict.
Yeah, it's more strict. You gotta go, yeah, you gotta go twenty percent. So.
I, I think the majority of our restaurants are there. I actually made fifteen percent to make it a little more.
I think that's great. Yeah, absolutely. I think that's great. Absolutely.
All right, we'll put. For December already, or where are, where's everybody at with payment?
I, I don't think we've had December yet. I don't think we've received December yet.
Then potentially rebating, or not rebating, but.
Literally, we could send the check back to them. If we get a December payment, we could send the December payment back to them on cash.
It probably already been deposited because they're due on the twentieth.
Oh, really?
Anybody paid.
Today's the nineteenth, so.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'll move forward.
January.
And the one thing, you know, when, when we were out visiting the restaurants and talking to the restaurant owners, the one thing that they really said that we could do right away would be to waive the business license liquor license fees. Because that's a chunk of money they don't have to come up with right away.
Right.
And then we can, we'll do the one percent. So what we're, what we're gonna do is, just so I'm clear, we're going to, using the criteria we developed, we'll establish the list of the qualified businesses. We will abate their, their general business license fees and liquor license fees and outdoor dining fees for the next twelve months.
Right.
Moving forward, we will, I guess abate is probably the best word, the one percent food and beverage tax for the next, I think I said, six months, and then we'll reevaluate at that time.
January through June with an evaluation and May or the first part of June for July moving forward.
All right, so the, just, just doing some rough numbers, the liquor license fees and stuff that I mentioned was sixty-two thousand dollars and we're looking at.
Hundred thousand for the.
Fifty, yeah, that was, that was that one percent for twelve months. So, yeah, you're looking at, yeah, you're probably looking at about the same dollar figure for the six-month period.
Oh, oh, that was, was that, oh, that was looking at the full one percent, the fifty-one thousand?
That was half, that was half. If you're looking at one percent, we'll double that. That would be about fifty thousand dollars for three months and a hundred thousand dollars for six months, a little over. So.
But if it's full one percent, how much is it?
That's, it'll be about a hundred thousand dollars for six months.
Okay.
So.
So in total, we're talking about a hundred and sixty, one sixty-five.
Exactly, which is pretty much what we calculated at our last discussion.
But this would be divided between thirty-eight or fifteen? What's?
Thirty-eight. It'll be the thirty-eight restaurants, and it'll be, the, the amount of money they'll get back will be dependent on how much money they generate, which is actually relatively fair.
But you also said going to allow other restaurants if they feel they qualify to go ahead and.
Absolutely. They'll get a letter and we'll put copies of that in transmittal pack so you can see them.
So.
All of this will need to be, all this will need to be approved.
All, all things, if, if every restaurant were exactly equal, divided by thirty-eight, that's forty-three hundred bucks for a restaurant. So it's a month's rent for some of them, less than a month's rent.
And, and truly, that's, that's fairly consistent with what a lot of the other communities have done when they've done grant programs. Some of them have done like a five thousand dollar grant program for qualifying restaurants. This is about the same thing. But truly, it's dependent on, on how big you are and how much revenue obviously you generate.
Problem is. We can extend it, Dave.
Yeah, we can extend it, but if they're already hurting, then they're, the one percent of nothing is nothing. So.
Well, they're all generating something. Truly, they're all generating something. Do you have to take my word for that? Because I, I've personally gone over the, uh, sales tax records for each of these businesses.
Getting closer and closer to quarter occupancy, fifty percent occupancy, whatever.
Of the restaurants?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I think we've only lost two or three.
No, no, no. I mean, their ability to serve people based on the mitigation level of.
Oh.
Tier, tier one mitigation.
That's, that's all up to the governor, and I, I knew someone was gonna ask that tonight, and there is no way I can answer that.
No, I, the, the good news is, well, we're down to forty-four hundred new cases. Only thirty-two deaths.
It's the hospital beds that keep us out from going to tier two. You, you gotta have twenty percent available, and, and it's unfortunate because it's, it's not, it's skewed because not every patient in the ICU has got COVID.
Right.
So.
And it's the.
That's a little flawed from the state perspective.
Right, well, and it's the problematic law of small numbers.
Correct.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yes, exactly.
Suddenly, you know, it's a twenty percent shift in occupancy.
So. Right. We're at eighteen percent availability, and you gotta be at twenty. Other than that, everything else we meet, but we can't move.
My guess is within about two weeks, hopefully around the first of the month, we'll, we'll be there.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I anticipated a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
And hopefully, more of us old farts will get our shots soon.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know here, I know here in Cook County where I live, they're starting, I think it's Monday, they're starting to do Phase One B.
Yeah.
Which is assault farts and then other healthcare workers.
All right, well, to, to get over with this discussion for tonight, Jim, do you have enough info to, you know, get some kind of, we gotta do an ordinance, don't we?
We do. All of this will be put into one ordinance. All of the various programs you talked about will put into an ordinance for two weeks. I, I took notes. for two weeks, I, I took notes on everything you've said, I know Mark has as well, so I, I, I think we have enough.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll be able to vote on it next meeting and, and it'll be uh, effective as of January first.
Yeah, that, that will be the language.
And, and we can actually work on getting the letters drafted, maybe even the letters sent to the businesses before then, letting them know this is coming.
Okay.
So they don't send in their sales tax for January.
All right, so we, we have, uh, the next item is community engagement, diversity, inclusion, John Petrillo.
Thank you, Mayor, as you may recall, on September one, twenty twenty, the village board authorized a consultancy with Dr. Brian Watkins to review village policies and procedures that support equal opportunity in the workplace and practices that support diversity and inclusion. All to better ensure consistency and equity in the delivery of municipal services to the community. On October one, twenty twenty, Dr. Brian Watkins initiated this consultancy. The scope of the consultancy includes an assessment of village policies and practices, a review of correlations between workforce and community demographics, and a facilitator to conduct meetings with village staff regarding community expectations for diversity and inclusion within village government. On December eighth, twenty twenty, the village board was briefed by Dr. Brian Watkins on observations and findings to date. This report can be found on the village website at vernonhills.org, keyword diversity and inclusion. We are now ready to facilitate public comment. If persons desire to comment on the village's commitment and efforts to ensure consistency and equity in the delivery of services, equal opportunity in the workplace, or have suggestions on improving policy and practices to support diversity and inclusion, information on this initiative will be shared on village communications platforms. The public comment period will be from January twenty-one to March nineteen. Persons who share their information will be contacted by Dr. Brian Watkins. For more information on the diversity and inclusion consultancy, please visit the website, again, vernonhills.org, keyword diversity and inclusion. Thank you.
Okay, any comments or questions on this one? We're getting to the point where we're gonna gather community input, okay. All right, John, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, new business, West End parking restrictions, Dave Brown.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mike Stordel will put up a map of the West End area, which will help the presentation, thank you, Mike. We were contacted by a resident in terms of West End. Uh, the specific email was uh, relating to New Year's Day and the amount of parking that is along the east side of West End. So there was some discussions uh, back and forth with the resident uh, and staff investigated. We wanted to look at what the actual problem is and see if there's some solutions. So what our findings are is currently, per the map, the parking's currently restricted along the southbound lane, the west side. And uh, there is, there is a fair amount of people who do park on West End. There's a, a certain level of deficiency of parking because of the use uh, uh, to the east. But I think more importantly, it might have been more related to the holiday season itself and the snow events that we are dealing with. Uh, they might have been doing operations at the same time internally, and people wanted to move their car out of harms way, so uh, that in the holiday presented some issues, so we did look at it, and uh, what our proposal is the, the main concern we have is off a Hawthorne Parkway when people are looking to turn uh, onto West End. If there's cars parked really close to the corner, that is more concerning. So what our proposal is, is to restrict parking for the first seventy feet from the right of way to essentially, if you were out there, it's the very first pole, there's a, a speed limit sign on it. But that would keep people far enough away from the, the intersection as they're making turns, and uh, it will improve the safety and the issue. I drive this uh, because working at the Public Works Department, I drive West End quite frequently. There usually are gaps in the parking, and um, I, I haven't uh, heard of really accident history. I think there are some situations where people have to uh, wait and be uh, respectful of the other person coming towards them, but I don't see that people are uh, driving at high rates of speed, et cetera. So um, I did discuss this with the homeowner, and the homeowner thought that that was a good solution. And that's the recommendation of staff. Um, should the village board concur, we would bring this back for, in a more formal form. You may also see in one of the attachments, uh, what we do is we update our uh, restrictions for parking and uh, that gets adopted, and then the police department will, would enforce those rules.
There is no, uh, currently no overnight parking, even with a permit, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. Do you think, seventy feet enough, cuz that's a little over four car lengths, I looked at it today, I was just wondering if, if you thought maybe another you know, i- is seventy, do you think seventy feet's gonna be enough for cars turning off in there?
Um, uh, my recommendation would be uh, seventy feet at this time. Should we see that, that du- isn't as effective, we certainly can, you know, modify, bring it back to the board, but I I think seventy feet allows people to make that turn, observe the car uh, potentially coming in the other direction. And uh, they can do that in a safe fashion.
Plus, at seventy feet, you don't have to put up another pole, right, because you've gotta pull there to uh, put the sign on, so.
What's the uh, is, isn't there already a, a minimum amount of space between a major street and the side street anyway?
I'm, I, I'm sorry, didn't.
In terms of no parking, like, you can never really park right on the corner. Of a street.
Yeah, there's one, one for the chief, yes.
Okay, he's, he, he had to, uh, he had to duck out, but I will, um, I'll substitute him as, as a pseudo-chief. Um, it's fifteen feet from, from the intersection, so you're not allowed to park within fifteen feet, seventy feet should be more than adequate.
So why, why is this street different than other streets, why, what makes this worse, I'm, I'm still not getting it.
I, I think.
The cut through between Greenleaf and Hawthorne Parkway. Greenleaf is not a controlled intersection at Butterfield, where Hawthorne is a light controlled intersection. And therefore, when I leave Public Works, even though I need to get uh, to Butterfield, I go east to West End, take West End to Hawthorne, then go west on Hawthorne to the light, and then make my left turn to head me back down south to Route forty-five and back home again. And I've taken that route many, many times, a- after many visits to Public Works. So uh, that, that makes that street uh, a lot more visible, a lot more used than uh, many other streets, it, it really is a semi-thoroughfare. Cuz the next north-south street, you have to go all the way to Indian Wood, cuz Aspen doesn't go all the way through. You gotta go all the way to, to Indian Wood than to, to go south.
Yeah, it's, it's basically that, that, uh, as Dave pointed out, that's really been the only concern. Um, it's a street that I've driven, well, five days a week for the last thirty years, um, because of working at Hawthorne. Um, and the only place I've ever encountered any kind of problems whatsoever has been right there at the end with somebody coming off of Hawthorne Parkway, if there was a car, you know, parked within twenty-five or thirty feet of that corner. So I, yeah, I think this will take care of any problems, as, as a general rule, traffic on there is pretty good about sliding in and out to allow you know, people to pass on there, and there's, it's never packed that much, and um, I, I think this will take care of any problems.
Although it, it has seen a lot more additional parking on there since COVID. Just like we're seeing many, many more cars parked on driveways during the course of the day, because people are working from home. And they're not taking their car out and about, so it seems, uh, from my point of view is that we've probably doubled the number of cars that are parked on that street during the course of the day uh, than in the past.
Well, what are the streets that we allow permit parking overnight, is that Greenleaf?
Yeah, and Hawthorne.
Is that it?
And parts of Hawthorne. Um, yeah, basically, in this neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I know we, we need to go back better part of fifty years, but you know, off of Tyler Court, there's visitor parking spaces inside the development. But it also seems like they're land-banked some parking that could be made available inside some of these neighborhoods. But that would probably be a hell of a research project to, to see if there was any land banking done and whether or not we should be directing HOAs to facilitate additional uh, community parking.
Well, there isn't any parking allowed on Indian Wood?
Um, parking is allowed on Indian Wood.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's overnight.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I don't think Indian, does Indian Wood have overnight permit?
I thought we had three streets.
I know for certain there's overnight permit on Hawthorne Parkway and Greenleaf.
I don't have an answer to that.
A number of people park in the Hawthorne School, Hawthorne North parking lot overnight. Uh, but I know over the last couple of years, Hawthorne School has gotten a little antsy about that, cuz I believe they ticketed a few cars and they stopped doing it.
So to answer your question for permit parking on Indian Wood, um, two to six AM uh, are the restrictions, Greenleaf to Crestview Lane, but there is permit parking on Indian Wood, some sections of it.
Okay.
So only the north section?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz the only other on-street parking in this area is NCT number four, and that's because um, they're the only one with private streets.
Yeah, okay. So what else do we get, wanna do on this one, we're gonna move the stop sign, I mean, move, no parking seventy feet from the stop sign?
Yeah, Mayor, if the concurrence of the board and direction is that you concur with staff recommendation, we will present this uh, on the consent agenda for the next meeting, if that is your direction.
It's okay with me.
Yep.
Everybody in?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
What else we got? Is there any new, anything else to come before the board as far as new business or communication?
Can I ask, Dave, um, it was in the transmittal regarding the comm ed putting the uh, their equipment in the front yards, are there any areas that would be affected in Vernon Hills?
It is for new subdivisions, so if we have a new subdivision, that rule would, uh, it would apply. Uh, essentially, comm ed is saying that uh, their new rules are to put the, their utilities and facilities within the right of way in the front yard rather than in the rear yard, which is current uh, previous practice.
You, so you're gonna, backs and, and your front lawn?
Yes, and the, the follow-up question that I have, and I'm checking into, is usually the utility companies uh, work together and they do a tri-trench of three utilities, dropping them in all in one operation, so if comm ed is moving uh, in this direction, will we find uh, the other utility companies in the same trench? And um, that's concerning with, obviously, with a lot of utility boxes within the right of way. We struggle in terms of where we're supposed to put snow now, and of course, we like to have some trees in the Parkway too.
Yeah, that, that'd be terrible, is there, is there any way to uh, not that we really need to fight it, I don't think we have any space for any new developments anyway, but um,
Yeah.
Th- this would not apply to just new homes going into like Riviera Estates, that's already been established, right?
Yes, sir.
So, do we really, do we even have land in Vernon Hills left?
Um, it, it would be very limited, uh, we are in conversations with comm ed's governmental affair agent to uh, to understand it a little bit more and where things move forward, but uh, to your point, uh, Doctor, it would be at the subdivision level, and there's limited opportunities in our village to have new subdivisions.
Well, if somebody started doing it, doing teardowns, so that would affect, if somebody tore down a house and built another.
Um, the, since the facilities are already in place, uh, it wouldn't impact uh, now for teardowns, but it would for a new subdivision starting uh, from the scratch.
So like, if, if we hadn't already agreed on the Darling Farm industrial development, if that were gonna be residential, then it would apply to that, but I don't think there's really any significant space anywhere else in town, so.
Yeah, yeah. In some applications, it might be a good idea, if you're up against a, a river, uh, you may want the utilities to, to be in the front yard where they're more accessible than up against an area that might be a flood plain. But that would be the only reason we, we would want it at a village level.
Okay. Any other items that come before the board?
Um, I have a, a, a question, I guess I'm kinda looking for an update on the uh, um, was it the Lake Charles uh, development and the requirement for uh, a architectural review committee and the HOA. Uh, what are the next steps that we're going to take, or are there any that we need to take, that's not, that we are gonna take, but, that we need to take?
I've been working on this with Jim and Mike, but uh, I guess maybe, Jim, do you wanna take over?
Sure, sure, we, we are, we have a meeting set up with representatives of the HOA on Thursday. Uh, we've identified the various ordinances dating all the way back to nineteen ninety-six that required an architectural review committee to be established for the custom home pods. So we've identified all those areas in our legislation that we feel required uh, an, an ARC. Um, a- as you know, trustee Schultz for many, many years, um, the village worked in cooperation with members of the HOA uh, in obtaining architectural approval letters, and then suddenly that was uh, terminated uh, in twenty seventeen. Um, so we're, we're trying to work it back to uh, the situation that, that it, it existed prior to twenty seventeen, again, identifying the requirements that are laid out in the um, in the ordinance, hopefully we can um, get to some accord as to what uh, the HOA is gonna, going to do in that regard. But uh, the, we feel the ordinances are pretty clear on what was required of the developer. And then in our opinion, once a developer left and sold off the custom pods, then it transferred on to the HOA. Um, so, to, to date, we've gotten some resistance, um, we are trying to, to work through the, the issues.
Okay.
So I, I'd rather than, you know, for, potentially spoil the meeting on Thursday, I, I, I think I'd prefer to leave it, leave it there and uh,
No.
Report again in two weeks.
Okay.
Sounds great, thank you.
All right, anything else? If not, is there a motion?
Are we assuming that, or are we hoping that probably our February second meeting will be an in-person meeting?
Don't know.
Just gonna have to wait and see, because now, we have moved to tier two, except uh, without, I mean, bowling alleys and all that other stuff are now back to being able to open, not, just not indoor dining yet, so I was.
We could, we could meet in a bowling alley.
Well, no, I, 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 it, it's, it's almost everything, wasn't the announcement yesterday that, that it's almost everything except?
Yeah, just not sure of the numbers, though, I'm just not sure of the numbers off the top of my head.
Okay.
Whether it's uh, groups of ten or more, or twenty-five or more. And then if that's the case, if it's twenty-five, I'll leave it up to you to decide.
Okay.
Mark, I can help on that, so is uh, as I shared with you earlier, the seniors were asking about, again, gathering. And uh, so we did uh, look at the Illinois Department of Public Health webpage called uh, Mundeline to see how they're handling their, their senior center, I believe it's called the Regent. And it's up to ten can gather, so the, the number would be a ten at this time.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would preclude us, yeah.
Okay, anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
The board. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Cook.
Hi.
Trustee Schultz.
Hi.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Hi.
Trustee Forster.
Hi.
Trustee Markwart.
Hi.
Trustee Takaka.
Hi.
President Byrne.
Hi. Motion carries the meeting's adjourned. Okay. Next is Committee of the Hall. I'd like to call the Committee of the Hall meeting. First item is approve the Committee of the Hall meeting minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Any comments, questions, deletions or corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustee Cook.
Hi.
Trustee Takaka.
Hi.
Trustee Forster.
Hi.
Trustee Markwart.
Hi.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Hi.
Trustee Schultz.
Hi.
President Byrne.
All right, motion carries. Okay. Hawthorne School District Seventy-three Elementary School South Concept Presentation. Proposed site plan and the architectural changes allowing additions to the existing school location at four-three-zero Aspen Drive.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can give you a, a summary of the project. Uh, this represents the third of a five-phase facilities master plan that included construction of the kindergarten addition at the Sullivan Center along with the Hawthorne Middle School North additions and will also include an additional renovations or additions to six other buildings within the school district. For Hawthorne Elementary South, the main addition would be located on the north side of the existing building and the additional space will accommodate additional art rooms, choir music rooms. Uh, one would be renovated within the existing building, a band and orchestra room, a gymnasium that would include a gym office, storage and toilet rooms, also an outdoor learning courtyard and budget permitting a new secure main visitor entry that's being bid out on an alternate basis and they would do that only if it fits within their budget. Mike, if you can go to the second page, please. Uh, to the right, you see in yellow, that represents the addition that would be constructed again off the north side of the building. Those items that are shown in light blue would be portions of the existing building that would be renovated. And the next page, Mike? Uh, this is a, you know, if you were to zoom out, this gives you an idea of where the addition and renovated spaces are with relation to the overall footprint of the existing facility. Uh, and the next page, Mike, if you could, please, shows a little more detail of where the work will take place. With the addition, you'll see to the north is where the gymnasium would be located and then going down on your screen, you can see where the art rooms and the art storage room would be located. Uh, and then south of that would be the outdoor learning court. Uh, to the left of your screen in orange is the fitness band area, the choir area, music rooms and the like. Also shows the renovated portion of the resource center in blue. Mike, the next screen, please. Uh, this one simply shows the renovated nurse's office. And the next screen, Mike. Thank you. This shows the color renderings of the, of the addition. Note the matching brown brick on the first floor and the etched precast panels on top. And these panels are intended to match the limestone accents on the existing facility. I should also note that parking will not be impacted by this project, however, staff will need to take a real close look at onsite traffic circulation as part of the technical review process. Again, this is only at concept stage. Uh, so if the cow feels this request is appropriate, then the matter should be forwarded or directed to begin the technical review process. It would then go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing and then back to the Village Board for final consideration. And there are representatives here from Hawthorne to answer any questions that you may have.
Any comments or questions on this one?
Is, is that a solar farm on the, the roof?
It is, and that is also an alternate proposal. So that again is going to depend on, on budgetary constraints based on the bids.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's got to go to planning and zoning and they'll have something to say about that big, um, blue ribbon, uh, sign. I'm not a fan of it. That, that's, number one, I'm not a fan of because typically that's a, a marker in time. It doesn't necessarily hold true two, three, four, five years down the road and it's awful off-sized for the, the sketch that was shown. But planning and zoning will have their say on signage and logos and things of that nature, so.
I might add that we've already moved it, so it's not there. We moved it to the inside of the building in the new lobby up front. As, as Mike mentioned, we're doing a lobby in front and we really want that and we're putting it inside the lobby.
Then, then if, if it wasn't illegal tonight, I would say go ahead with the project. Process, so, but it looks nice. Thank you.
Yeah. Looking at what, looking at what is being built, um, I, I'm assuming that means that, and looking at the entire building, that the cafeteria space is adequate because I thought that was one of the things you were looking at expanding or?
No, we built in a cafeteria addition ten years ago onto the school, so that's not an issue.
So that's, so that's, that's going to be good enough going forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good, good.
Well, do we want to just refer this to technical review and?
I guess so.
Yeah, a general, a general concurrence by the board is, is sufficient.
Does everybody concur?
Yeah.
Yes. I presume all of the, all of the band orchestra music rooms have special soundproofing of them?
Yes, we have an acoustical engineer that was involved in the project, so we have acoustical separation from the other areas of the school for that reason, for both reasons, so noise doesn't get out and, you know, interruption from outside don't come in.
Good. All right. That about, about it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. You know.
Have a great evening.
It'll be nice. So, okay, thank you. All right. Uh, that's, is there a motion to adjourn Committee of the Hall?
No, ma'am.
Second.
Motion is second. All, all indicate by, do you want to adjourn with?
Roll call, roll call, please, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, yeah. Because of the open meetings requirements during virtual meetings, everything has to be by.
Okay, okay, okay. So, okay, roll call.
Trustee Cook.
Hi.
Trustee Takaka.
Hi.
Trustee Forster.
Hi.
Trustee Markwart.
Hi.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Hi.
Trustee Schultz.
Hi.
President Byrne.
Hi. Motion carries. Uh, Committee of the Hall is adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Good night. Good night. Thank you, good night. Good night.
Good night.